All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
All right, next we have Mr. Formod for our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to read to you Psalm one hundred forty-five. I kept reading this last night trying to decide which verses to pick and you're gonna get the whole Psalm forty-one forty-five. I will extol you, my God and King, and bless your name forever. Every day I will bless you and praise your name forever and ever. Great is the Lord and greatly to be praised, his greatness is unsearchable. One generation shall commend your works to another and shall declare your mighty acts. On the glorious splendor of your majesty and on your wondrous works I will meditate. I will speak of the night of your awesome deeds. I will declare your greatness. I will pour forth the fame of your abundant goodness. I will sing aloud of your righteousness. The Lord is gracious and merciful, slow to anger and abounding in steadfast love. The Lord is good to all, his mercy is over all that he has made. All your works will give thanks to you, oh Lord. All your saints will bless you. They will speak of the glory of your kingdom and tell of your power and make known to the children of man your mighty deeds and the glorious splendor of your kingdom. Your kingdom is an everlasting kingdom and your dominion endures through all generations. The Lord upholds all who are failing and rises and raises up all who are bowed down. The eyes of all look to you and you give them their food in the season. You open your hands, you satisfy the desire of every living thing. The Lord is righteous in all his ways and kind in all his works. The Lord is near to all who call on him, to all who call on him in truth. He fulfills the desire of those who fear him. He also hears the cry and saves them. The Lord preserves all who love him, but all the wicked he will destroy. My mouth will speak of the praise of the Lord and let all the flesh bless his holy name forever and ever. Bow with me in prayer, please. Father in heaven, thank you that you are so involved. I pray, Father, that as the county commissioners consider today how to be caring for the county and all of the struggles that they go through to do this and the pressures that they feel. I pray, Father, that they will remember that you are here and that you are prepared to stretch out and to provide and to care for everything that's happening. I pray, Father, that we'll both be encouraged and directed with your wisdom so that your name is honored in the end. In Jesus' wonderful name I pray, amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it a public speech today?
Yes, public comment, Mr. Formod. Yes, sir, come on up.
Completely different subject. Tonight I know is is the budget hearing. Then we're talking about ad valorem taxes. Do we ever think outside the box about this whole topic? I mean, ad valorem taxes is very painful way to raise taxes, it seems to me. There's a classic pricing formula of goods that I learned when I lived in Canada. A wholesaler sells something for a dollar. The distributor doubles the price, sells it for two dollars. The retailer puts a third of his selling price as the markup and so the dollar good that started here comes to me as three dollars. You put ad valorem tax in there and I my ad valorem tax, my county share of my total ad valorem tax bill is going to be about three, three and a half percent of my expendable income this year. Uh, just knowing where it is. And so you bring a dollar in here like to blissmies and they gotta pay three percent for ad valorem tax, so they add three cents on that. And it doubles and goes to the hardware store now at at two dollars and six cents. And the hardware store has to pay that six cents plus they have to add their three cents. And it gets getting marked up and marked up. We can begin to see that the three dollar package of screws may end up being three dollars and twenty-eight cents in my pocket. And the county's only gonna get nineteen cents for ad valorem tax out of that. The system is gonna keep uh, about nine cents as markup on the ad valorem tax. And I'm gonna pay three twenty-eight for the package of nails plus my ad valorem tax. I'm paying their ad valorem taxes plus mine. Take away all the ad valorem tax, nobody pays anything. And we go to a point of sale tax. To raise the nineteen cents on that three dollar fence, you'd have to put in about a six percent point of sale tax, which will scare everybody to death when you say six percent. Uh, but it's only gonna be six percent on three dollars, it's only gonna come up to be, you know, eighteen, uh, three dollars and eighteen cents. So now I've already got a lower price, even though I've added six percent to the sale price than the markup in the system. And I've eliminated my ad valorem tax, so I've got more spendable income now. And I'm paying a lower price. Oh, by the way, I reverse engineered what the three quarter percent sales tax in Atchison County raised last year. And if we put six percent on point of sale around here, we'd probably generate about twenty-four million dollars. And you're only looking for about fifteen million dollars in the ad valorem tax this year. So the point of sale tax could drop down to about three percent. We'd have the county fund it for three percent at point of sale. Nobody pays ad valorem tax. I've got a lower price to pay at point of sale. And I've got more expendable income because we decided to think outside the box.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, that all comes out of a discussion in a book called The Fair Tax that you can read. Uh, about, let's get away from the US income tax. And let's get away from social security tax. If you read the book on fair tax, you learn all these formulas.
Thank you. All right, any other? Okay, thank you, sir. Public comment, don't see any on there. Maybe, no, okay. Um, approval of the agenda. I don't have any other additions to today, so I would look for a motion to approve today's agenda.
I so moved second.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. I have three easy votes. Um, next is the consent agenda. We have the commission meeting minutes from last week, August nineteenth, um, as well as a finance directory view. Mark.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, we have payroll this week. The check date is Friday, August twenty-ninth for one hundred ninety-five thousand nine seventy-two eighty-four. Um, the expenses for accounts payable, check date Wednesday, August twenty-seventh is ninety-two thousand seven thirty-five twenty-eight. And out of that total, zero dollars is credit cards. And there's no negative cash balances on this AP.
Thank you. Right, with that, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move second.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. On aye, passes three to zero. Um, next is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Uh, I attended a Economic Development Board meeting last week and it was productive meeting. Um, we discussed at what we're gonna do in the next meeting and that is focus on uh, housing. Atchison housing. Uh, specifically uh, affordable housing. So I think that's important and we all see uh, homes going up around Atchison, different places. Uh, but I think we need to focus more on affordable homes. Uh, and so I think this is the place to do it uh, at this economic development uh, meeting. That's the plan. That's one, one of the agenda items for the next meeting, so.
I have a area agency on aging meeting next week, so that would be the fourth September.
Okay.
It's the only thing I have.
Um, just wanted to remind everyone that this evening is our R and R hearing at six PM at Memorial Hall. Um, congratulations to Atchison County on their twenty twenty-five match day. Um, at match day this year, they blew last year out of the water and got seven hundred. They ended up raising seven hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents is what is currently on their um, site. So that is awesome. Um, also Wednesday is our Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Welcome Get Together for Deanna Lamb, our new executive director at five-thirty. And then on Friday, we will be going, um, the clerk and myself and Commissioner Campbell to Lawrence to talk about um, learning to analyze our RHID and our NRP. Um, also at the match day, I was given um, the United Way. We did not fund them this year, but they're still having their breakfast. Um, so they gave me this to bring. Um, it will be Friday, September nineteenth at seven-thirty um, at the Atchison Event Center. Um, they are honored to welcome Mark Hewlett, which is the president and CEO of the YMCA of Greater Kansas City as the keynote speaker. And just wondered if we wanted to do that. Um, a patron would be fifty dollars um, for your ticket. So um, I haven't looked at my calendar, but if I am available, I plan to go as the patron. So September nineteenth, Friday at seven-thirty AM. So I can make a copy of this for you guys too. And if we could just request to be at a table for the county if anybody wants to go. Um, so I'll make sure, get a copy of that too, or maybe just scan it and send it to our department heads too. Um, cause historically we've had a county table. Um, we've went fifty-fifty with the city to sponsor the breakfast, um, just not this year, so there's that. Okay, so that was all I have. Um, no presentation of petitions or proclamations. Um, and the new business, we have Susan Kerrigan, county clerk, to set the budget hearing date.
Yeah, it's just really more request for you all. I'm, I'm assuming that you are not planning on completely setting the budget for tomorrow. We did not advertise this as a budget hearing, so because it's just an R and R hearing, you all need to hold a second hearing to set your budget. Um, so Mark and I talked a bit about it. It needs to be advertised in the newspaper at least ten days prior to the hearing. There is a deadline for the R and R hearing, which is Sep- September twentieth. I, I couldn't find anything about a deadline for a budget hearing. I know you have to submit your budget to the clerk by October first. But Mark and I talked and we thought might be wise if you guys can to hold yourself to that nine-twenty deadline. Um, and I don't know if you feel like you want to have a completely separate and other special meeting now at Memorial Hall or here or somewhere else? Or if you wanna do it in conjunction with your September, like sixteenth meeting, like regular meeting? So something for you all to discuss.
It kinda seems like we're having a big one down there to me.
And they're gonna speak.
That's all gonna be hashed out kinda. We can still talk about the budget down there, that's just not the budget here. It's just the R and R kind of where we are here, here this.
And if we choose to change it, it's changeable. We've got some time to work on that.
It can still all be conveyed in a budget hearing, yeah.
I like the, the sixteenth at our meeting.
Just regular here.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, then I will get that in the newspaper.
And do we have to state a time?
No, we could just do it at the beginning. That way, if people wanna come, they don't have to sit or.
I, I don't know, I should, I just wanna make sure that we.
Like we get up in our hearing at ten and.
Set a time or.
Right, yeah, um, like you mean directly after opening the meeting, if you have it.
Or at point, or maybe at ten-thirty. Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm.
Check those path that we're doing it all correctly, right?
Anytime during the meeting's fine, setting a beginning makes sense.
So September sixteenth at ten AM or ten fifteen.
Sure.
Ten fifteen, split the difference. I will prepare the form and email it to you.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, because it's.
It's a, it's a whole other thing.
Yeah, okay, great.
Um, we have a little bit of discussion on that. So in the future, they, they have a notice of a hearing, a notice of R and R hearing, or one that's combined.
Right.
So after learning more of this with you, the one that's combined, you kinda need to know what your budget wants to be.
Yeah.
More so at that time. So I, I feel like we don't know what it is so early in August, that it doesn't make sense to have it combined.
I agree, and when she explained to me the difference of the two different dates, I'm like, especially as wonky as it is for the public to come, it's like we didn't hear them because we opened and closed and they're like, what? And then also we've altered it after that anyway, so.
Yeah.
I, I love.
Have the R and R.
The R and R, get the feedback, go back to the drawing board, make your adjustments.
Have the budget.
Yeah.
I feel like if you have a very small R and R like increase, it might be okay to hold them together.
Sure.
If it's, if it's.
If it's more tighter.
If it's, yeah, very.
Well, and if you're solidified on all the action you can take because.
You can hold it later. September twentieth is the last day that you can hold it. So you could push if you're gonna do a combination to give yourself a little bit more time, but it.
I like them separate, cause then you hear from the public and you have the ability to make additional.
Well, we didn't have them together last year.
We did, we did.
Remember how wonky it was when I was like.
And I sat up there between you guys and some members of the public were saying, well, you didn't even listen to us.
We opened and closed.
Had your budget hearing number that you wanted.
Didn't we uh, lower after the R and R hearing? We didn't, but we lowered it before we adopted the budget.
Yes, but they were still at the same time. Which is okay to do, it's still fine to do that.
You should have your public comment with your hearing open and then you should adopt, motion to adopt to exceed the resolution to exceed R and R while the hearing's open. Don't close the hearing and then do that, because that's not the right way. It's what I understand.
No. You're talking about the hearing tonight? Yeah, open it and say, we are adopting, we are looking forward to exceed.
Open public comment, you can close public comment and then if you're gonna motion to adopt to exceed, you do that before you close the hearing.
But our motion to exceed can be as general as that. We don't have to specifically state a millimeter.
Correct.
Okay, great.
It's just, you're just motioning to, that you're gonna exceed, you don't know exactly how far you're gonna work to lower it, you know, whatever, but yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, next is the R and R budget hearing discussion. So I'll, I'll bring up a topic because it was asked to me, um, a husband and wife, um, every year I've been here, every budget hearing we've had, they have been here. Um, and this gentleman's traveling um, for work and out of the country and his wife asks, will there be a Zoom link? Because he's that, I mean, he's a dedicated taxpayer that shows up every year. Um, and so I explained that we weren't having a Zoom link because our IT director had pointed out like, hey, I can facilitate this, but you're gonna have to purchase a camera and hardware.
Some equipment.
And so we were like, oh, whoa, 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 like for a one-time Memorial Hall meeting, we don't wanna spend more money to do those things. Um, and so then they were like, well, what about a Facebook Live? Um, something where people can watch. So wanting to bring that up for discussion, um, to see. I know that our Facebook administrators, um, under the county, the only one that will be there this evening would be you, Mark, um, that I'm aware of. I mean, without asking the others, um, and then also knowing that like we play it a big part of this hearing. So it letting them know, like, if this is something you guys wanna do, like, we're not going to be checking comments. It might not have great volume, you're gonna get probably, you know, it's not gonna be.
A bunch of feedback as well.
Yeah.
Depending on where, so how it's gonna be set up is two sets of tables, a screen in the middle with a computer, so we can show the, the public what we wanna discuss with them. And then a podium that will either face you guys or face the crowd, I don't know which exactly. Um, but it's like, where do you wanna put that Facebook Live? Where is it gonna pick up the feed? Is it gonna be able to hear everyone else and not the speaker?
I wanted to note that at the planning and zoning meeting where we had in the courthouse, we had the microphones and everything. There was a lot of feedback that you couldn't hear. That's why you started walking around with the microphone. You couldn't hear people from that were making comments or asking questions or and I think even with the microphone, it was sometimes hard to hear, so.
And to that point, I was asked, well, you, well, you did the Zoom for the zoning meeting and I said, it's because we did it in the courtroom where we had the hardware, but then we heard feedback that, why would you do it in this small of a space? So we're, we're, we're hearing, right? And we're making adjustments, but I just, I guess I, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm also like, know that it's not going to exceed everyone's expectations, so. But it, but we had it, we, we could have, you know, I don't, I don't know.
How many of you have equipment we can borrow, will they? Be like a school or?
And that's the other thing, like, we're using um, the mix um, sound system down at Memorial Hall, so I don't know what all that integrates with. Like, I don't know if it's like a mic and a sound system like our computers connected to, or if it's something like the court's connected to down there. I haven't seen it, I don't. And I think that's what the IT director was saying is when I had a conversation with him, he can buy the equipment that will work with all that, but it was gonna be over six hundred dollars.
Do we have a county tablet that would be able to access our social media? To set up?
I'm sure the IT director probably has something. But.
Does he have authority to run the Facebook? Um, okay, so we just need to check and see if he would be there. Are you guys opposed to that or what do you, where are you at?
I'm, I'm not opposed, I think. I'm, I'm trying to just, because if, I think if it's really poor quality and stuff, not, not.
Yep.
Is it like, are we gonna end up hearing more about it because it's really poor? Or is the attempt, I mean, first of all, I think that having it in a space big enough is the big thing.
Yeah.
The, the, the big thing is to accommodate the, the public to get there. I, it would be fantastic if it could be recorded like we normally do, but beans that we're having at Memorial Hall. No, it is, I, I don't know, maybe we should have considered this earlier. I didn't think it was probably that big a deal, but I, I guess I'm not opposed to it, that I would hope that it would be at least to a certain quality before we offer it. And if that makes sense, if that makes sense of what I'm saying.
No, we, we have time, we could probably do a test run. On possibly a test run, if we could get ahold of.
That's a really great point.
We have some time to do it. Um, I agree, if it's, if it's gonna be set in a place that we can hear comments and catch our responses if we respond. Uh, I agree, it's fine, we are, we're not gonna respond to
Comments.
Comments from Facebook, that's, that's too much to ask with that. So if it can be done, yes, that's, I'm okay with that. And then that takes care of the recording aside, I assume, right?
Yep.
But.
I like the test run idea, that's a good idea.
No, I feel like we, I, I, we need to get ahold of him like probably right now, but.
Jump into that?
Yeah, if you would, if he can do a quick.
And I think whatever, sorry. Uh, whatever we do at the beginning of the meeting, uh, it ought to be announced that we're, we're doing Facebook Live or we're, if that don't work, we are doing a recording, I think it's pub, I mean, we, we need to let them know that it's being recorded somehow.
So I'm glad that you said that because that's another thing I wanted to talk about is setting expectations. Um, because, you know, it, the idea was thrown out about possibly having like a moderator or a third party to keep people at bay or to move things along. And I wholeheartedly feel that it is my job as the chair to do those things. But with that being said, I'm only one of the three of you for a body. So I wanna know your expectations so that I can ensure that my actions reflect the board and not me. Because I want to make sure that and, and whatever our expectations are, that I'm able to convey those upfront so that if I cut someone off because of a time or we need to move things along, it's not looked at as I'm being rude, right? These are the expectations for our meeting. We wanna hear as many people, we wanna hear you, but you know, and, and also that I know people get pretty passionate, um, so you know, I'm okay with that, but I don't, I want you guys to be okay with that. I wanna know your expectations, I guess, is what I'm saying, so that I can do a good job at the beginning outlining how we're gonna handle this meeting. Because I do believe we're gonna have a huge turnout. And whether or not everyone's gonna feel comfortable speaking, um, but for everybody that wants to speak, giving them the opportunity to come address us with their concerns or their solutions or their ideas. Um, so if you guys have any, any, I, anything about that, I mean, we talked about the time limit, Jody offered to go get a timer, but we feel like we can just be mindful of, you know, thank you. We gotta move on next.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think it needs to be stated similar to that in the beginning. If, if we decide not to put a specific time limit on it, we need to let them know that there is, there, there are gonna be time restrictions, stuff we just have. We, once the point is, is across and we have to move on. So that you're gonna have to lay that out at the beginning. But instead of saying two minutes or three minutes, whatever it is, just say, we are mindful of the time. We want to hear from you, but we have to move the meeting along. Uh, and something, the statement similar to that. And um, hear as many folks as we can. Um, I don't know what, do we have a two-hour window that we wanna work with? Is that where we're setting? I mean, cause I, I think we could accomplish. I, I, I don't know why we couldn't accomplish two hours, but.
So the only thing with that, and I've, cause I've been kinda thinking pros and cons of it is, this is their one opportunity to address us. So it's kinda like, I had a conversation about the walking clinic, right? Like if you show up and you wanna be seen and you're within your timeframe to be heard, like you should stay until, stay until you see everyone. So I think if we stick with the time limit, but like with the zoning meeting, it was a room full, but not everyone wanted to speak, right? Like, we only had a few people that spoke on behalf of the group. Think we'll be okay, but I don't really feel like we should stay two hours with this particular topic because we need to hear everyone that's willing. I don't, I don't know.
What about a sign-in sheet for those who want to speak? Then you could kind of have.
You would be helpful for your minutes.
It would, and you, and people would then be queued, cause they could just kinda go in order.
So just put it at the podium, put it at the.
Okay, I'll go now, I'll go now, I'll go now.
Well, as they come in, they could do a sign-up if you.
If you wanna speak.
And it wouldn't limit, I mean.
It's not limit, but yeah.
It would be, that way we would know that you go down and it's like, uh, check off.
You could go.
Then it's like, uh, Joe Blow, you said you wanted to speak. It's, you know, we, we have a lull or maybe a, uh, you know, sometimes there's a natural pause that you can get a different topic introduced or, although we don't know what topic.
You don't know what their topic is.
We don't know the topic, but.
But you could go through your list and then if after that, there's kind of last minute people who feel.
We have a, a, a.
We're gonna have a, a, a sign in log of any kind. Like, we kind of passed one around at the. Zoning, zoning meeting. Are we gonna have something similar to that? I don't know.
So the only devil's advocate of that idea is some people come. With, I'm gonna speak or I'm not gonna speak, and midstream they change their mind because.
Yeah.
They can say. You said something that triggered me, so I want to now, you know, I thought of something I want to share, or. Oh, gosh, I was gonna say that, but he just said exactly what I was, so I'm not gonna say anything, and I don't.
Say that, they can.
Yeah, it's already been addressed.
Feel the need, because. Sorry.
And then once.
Already been made.
So then, once the people on the sign in are done, then you say, anybody else, okay? I mean, I'm, I'm open to any ideas.
Just an idea, just to.
It's, it's fine with me either way.
It's just catching them.
Right, hey, you have to catch them at the door, but those.
And there's gonna be so many people, I anticipate that, that.
I do too.
We might not.
Yes, just a, just an idea.
Okay, I, something else that I thought of when we were talking about seating, and people could go up. Upstairs, well, are they gonna have to come down to speak?
Right, good point.
I mean.
That's kind of where the sign in sheet, because then maybe you. I don't, I mean, not that you have to start seating, but people that are gonna speak, you kind of want them to be right there, able to get to the microphone.
Hmm, good suggestion, we just, I don't know, there's. Never as easy as it sounds.
I know, and we try with the best of intentions, but every time we hear, you know, we didn't. So I'm, I, I like it, I just don't know how we could facilitate with that big of a group.
You just have to have a table at the entry. Catch people.
There's plenty of room, there is, I think four here.
But also, when you're encouraging everyone to come and speak anyway, like, do you really need to check in? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
No, it's, it would, it just, we're trying to make the process easier and. If there's lulls, that's, that would prevent the lull, because you, you know.
Well, if there's a lull, then hey, we don't hear from someone in the next two minutes, we're, we're making a motion to adjourn. Like. We, we have control over the lulls too, like.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a problem with that. Um.
Something we could have added to the agenda of, if you plan to speak, please try to sit. But then, you know, it's gonna be so packed, who knows?
But then I have people saying they emailed me and I didn't email them back, and I never received emails, so you're never gonna like.
Yeah.
I just think we roll with it and do the best. We can and.
Learn from it.
Uh, well, okay, so we've got the talk about. Time and that you will convey at the beginning, right?
Yeah, the consensus is we're not timing, but we're gonna be mindful of like, you can't ramble for ten minutes when we have a room full of people or.
I think it's fine to say, well, we're gonna. Keep your comments to three minutes, but if we're not doing that, you know, having a timer, I think that would be really. Um, two to three minutes. It, it would set people off, I mean, yeah, I, I don't like that.
So ideally, we're encouraging you to two to three minutes.
Yeah. So also on that, is there. Although we plan to listen, sometimes there's interaction, so does that take away from their time if, if there's extensive. Back and forth, you know, they could be at the podium, maybe they ask, we talk for a minute, and then we go start. Uh, back and forth, I mean, they could be there quite a while, but it's not just them. Filibustering, I guess, maybe that's not the right word to say, but, you know, if we.
Yep.
If we do have back and forth, that extends their. Podium time.
Well, then maybe we just play it, I mean, continue to play it by ear, like, if you have questions and we are, we're gonna have to get your questions answered. I mean, we gotta keep moving.
Well, and, and to your point, if it's an extensive exchange or answer, and we see that, then we're going to have to. If they give their name, and what else should they give at the beginning?
I feel like their email and phone number.
What district they're in, I don't know, but just kind of let us know where they're from.
Or their address, because most people don't know their district.
And then.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to, we need to take that down, because if there's an extended, we'll get back to them, but we, but we have to. Move along, we can't sit here for.
Yeah.
Twenty minutes trying to find all the answers, you know, we can't, we, but they, you know, we need to address them. But maybe not all tonight, tonight, you know, but we have to. Understand that some of these answers might go.
Yeah.
Long, or might require us to look into it.
Well, and also, I don't know if you guys, at the zoning meeting, you could tell, like, we got close to that two hour mark. And we started losing people, like, people were getting up and leaving, and so. Okay, um. So all I have written down is the two to three minutes encouraged, um. What other expectations beyond like.
Whoa.
That you guys have, anything?
I think Otto set the tone, uh. The expectation that it's gonna be set, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna require stability and respect, and. We're gonna give that back.
Yep.
But we.
Both ways.
We have to have it.
Okay. All right. Anything else about this evening we needed to discuss?
Is there a specific place that either one of you are gonna go or want to go as a commission? Is it, is there any?
There's a wine bar, like before and after. I'm just teasing, um.
I'm a bookworm.
Thank you, I needed. We need it, we'll have it to eat right now, thank you for that.
Um, well, I think that maybe up the crab will want to know, okay. After tonight, what happens?
Oh, that's great.
So I think that we need to say that we could go back, if, if, if there's something that we need to look at, but I think we're gonna address it. We then will have our, now we have the date of our budget hearing, that we could. Actually put that out and kind of give a timeline of how things progress.
So I think that that's a great, great idea, and that'll be before we close. Like, before we make our motion, like, hey, we know we're exceeding R and R, so there will be a, I will call for a motion to exceed R and R. That means we have nowhere to go, but down from what you received in the mail, but we have to exceed. The R and R rate of, which I have it down, but, um. So our budget hearing will be nine sixteen at ten fifteen. Unless you think we should just say that before you close the hearing.
Well, reiterate, reiterate, I'd say, I'd say you can say it at the beginning, but then reiterate again at closing, because.
No.
They have to hear it.
Because people will want to know when. When the, the final, final is.
Mark prepared these two, assuming no comments of those as well. Who cannot have those and mention new ones?
You must do a resolution to exceed it, and you must do a roll call.
Okay.
Without doing those, then you will be forced to stay or.
Okay.
And I have that in your, in your commissioner agenda for today. Right?
Hmm, we don't have roll call.
Yeah, right, we'll call them.
Oh, okay, so it'll be after a public comment?
Correct.
Okay, so open public comment, closed public comment, then the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution to exceed our.
Yep. So that's the motion, and the roll call vote is what's gonna.
That's what Susan will do to record your vote.
Yes, okay, I need that.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
And then, um.
The resolution number.
Do you have those?
No.
Would you need a resolution number?
But there could be some that come later in this meeting right now, so we.
Oh, yeah. Okay, anything else for tonight's discussion before?
At, at some point in the discussion. Um, are you gonna talk about where we are now? Since, since the, since the R and R statement went out, are we gonna talk about that?
So, um, down in this agenda, around eleven twenty, which I see that that may be not be the time, but there was about like a workshop. Talk about the budget, and one of those topics I wanted to talk about, this PowerPoint that I created, and give you guys some.
Okay.
Happens to stop.
Awesome, that works for me.
Thank you.
That I think will answer those questions. Thank you.
Um, all right, so based on First Friday, we can bump the care recording to next Tuesday. Because then we'll still get it to them before the First Friday, which is September fifth. So are you guys good with that?
True.
All right, so we'll put that on next week, and then we can figure out and just recap the process, maybe it would be helpful. Um, we talked about tonight. All right. So now we have introduction and consideration of resolutions, um. The first is a moderate income housing and KHITC resolution. Um, Justin Prajon came and visited with us last week about that. We had, um, the opportunity to read through it. Um, and if, do you guys have any other further discussion or questions before I would call for a motion on that? Okay, that resolution number would be.
Fifteen fifty-four.
Okay. Good. So I would look for a motion to adopt a resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen fifty-four. A resolution of support for the nineteen thirteen apartments, phase two, and central school apartments, suite D project. Applications to. To the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program. And the Moderate Income Housing Program for the Development of Certain Housing Within Atchison County, Kansas. Whereas Atchison County has a demonstrated lack of housing availability. Across the full spectrum of price point and housing product types. And whereas Atchison County citizens and employers rely on housing availability to meet their personal and business growth needs. And whereas the nineteen thirteen apartments and central school apartments projects. Have previously and successfully completed moderate income housing, also known as M I H, and Kansas Housing. Investor Tax Credit, also known as KHITC projects. And whereas the nineteen thirteen apartments, phase two project, and the central school apartment, suite D projects. Are being pursued by the ownership entities of those respective properties, along with Palmeroy Development LLC. All of which are Kansas-based companies with Kansas-based ownership. And whereas with the help of the M I H and KHITC program. The proposed nineteen thirteen apartments, phase two project, and central school apartment, suite D project. Would develop a total of four additional downtown apartment units. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body supports nineteen thirteen LLC. Central School Apartments LLC and Palmeroy Development LLC in their application. To the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, requesting the following awards. Nineteen thirteen LLC requests a hundred and fifty thousand of M I H and three units worth of KHITC. Which is ninety-six thousand. Central School Apartments LLC requests one worth KHITC of thirty-two thousand. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is authorized to sign the accessibility certification, energy certification. And site review checklist that are part of the application process. Once the developer, Justin Prajon of Palmeroy Development, has executed a compliance guarantee. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect upon passage by the governing body. I would look for a motion to approve as presented.
Sure.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
Started going along.
Okay, so next we have the uh, Memorial Hall Lease Agreement. So we made the final tweaks at per next request, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the Memorial Hall Lease Agreement. Between Atchison County and the Trustees of Memorial Hall and the Atchison Recreation Commission. Um, and allow the chair to sign this agreement if, um, if passed, so have a motion to approve the Memorial Hall Lease Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Thank you. Okay, so next we have, um, executive sessions, and who is in the? The, we have.
The commissioner, Jody and I.
Okay, so the first one is, um, executive session, non-elected personnel. On the subject of wages for Broaden Bridge Superintendent Commissioners and HR.
How long?
Uh, fifteen minutes.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at ten forty-seven AM. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room. Of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, uh, HR Director and Ridenbridge Superintendent.
Now, second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
So how long?
Ten. Okay, we are back in open session and gonna extend the same executive session parameters for ten minutes.
Ten minutes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. All right, we have a non-elected. Fifteen minutes, um. With the treasurer and the commissioners, subject of treasure office staffing, just you and us or anybody else?
Okay.
Just the treasurer and the commissioners.
Hey, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at eleven twelve. AM, uh, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session are to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in, uh, you say fifteen minutes. Uh, in the commission room of the first four, or in the basement of the courthouse, and those present will be three commissioners and the county treasurer.
Well, second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. All right, I wonder if that's something, sorry, for it's back, okay. So we have an un-elected, um. Executive session with commissioners and finance director, subject to wages for an hour. And then after that, we'll go into budget workshop.
One, one hour?
Yeah.
We'll make, I'll move that to Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at eleven twenty-eight. AM, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one. Nine B one, and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board will. And that the board will come out of executive session in one hour in the commission room, the basement of the courthouse. Those present will be three commissioners and finance director.
Second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes. All right, we're back in open session, um. No other need for executive sessions, so next is just, um. To adjourn into a post-meeting workshop with the finance director. Uh, for the remainder of the day for the twenty twenty-six budget. Have a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero. Oh, oh, did we cut off yet? Nope, sorry, can I, can I do anything since I made a motion, I guess?
You can go back in.
Okay, well, or I could just be here to ask Pat. I got an opioids review document to sign. Does that need a motion again to allow me to sign these opioids or because we did it once with the opioid?
It is on the same settlement, though.
Um, well, I haven't opened it, because I wanted to do it with all of you.
The Purdue, the Purdue one.
Um, hold on, it's opening. Sorry. I meant to ask that I came while we were in executive session, so, um. I see. It is. Um, local political subdivisions, this one's for eight opioid manufacturers. Alvegin, Amneal, Apo, no, this seems to be another one.
Yeah, that's something different, probably just.
So. The deadline is, um, October eighth, so we can put it on next week. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
There's, there's one other thing also, you, you had tasked me with, uh, working out something with, uh, Crow. Um, on Sentinel One for the L T department, we have reached an agreement on language for our. Engagement letter with them. I think the commission already, I know the commission already approved it with the changes to be. Um. To to be made, uh, we went through pretty significant back and forth with them, including getting K Camp involved. Because it was my opinion that under the. Letter that they were presenting to us, that, uh, we would be taking on liability potentially that wouldn't be covered by our insurance and that. I think K Camp worked with them to come up with some language that was a little more agreeable. Uh, like any software license, if you've ever read all of those, they are egregious and draconian. Uh, this still isn't, uh, isn't perfect, but it isn't, uh, it isn't what was originally. It isn't as bad as what was originally proposed to us. Uh, I talked with with Scott about the risks involved with, uh, entering into to the. This agreement and he he and I are both satisfied that it doesn't open the county up to any unreasonable risk. Uh, and that it's a necessary service that we need, right? I think the commission already authorized you to sign the, uh. The engagement letter af- after review, but I do have that ready now.
So we can put that on next week's too?
Well, I think Scott wanted to get that done, um, ASAP, and I think it's already been approved, actually. I know it's already been approved, but.
So just having me sign it in the meeting?
Okay, you need to back in. Or have you already left in?
Do we need to make a motion to go back into a meeting or just signing it?
I don't think this actually requires to be in a meeting, it was already approved at a meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're adjourned. Sorry about that, just wanted to make sure that.
Okay, okay, so I am going to. Close it out.
I have an appointment that day.